I would like to call to order the City of Lake Forest School District, District 67, Board Education Meeting for Tuesday, October 23rd, 2012. We did hold an executive session at 6:00 PM, but did not conduct any regular business. May I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mrs. Fisher? Mr. Julian?
Here.
Mr. Penderisky?
Here.
Mrs. Rose?
Present.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mrs. Wold?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The President's Report. Welcome to everyone. It's nice to see so many faces in the room. And I just briefly want to remind Board members that we do have a joint workshop tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM with District 115. Mrs. Golan and I had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Simick on Friday to review the workshop. And I think we both left that meeting feeling very excited that we're really going to be talking about where the district is headed and thinking about the education of our children in the future. This is the results of the entry plan that Mr. Simick has conducted, and he will share with us his views on our district. So, very much looking forward to it. Moving on to the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Simick?
Thank you, Mrs. Wold. And I would like to start with, it's really nice to have Dr. Shin and some help in the audience tonight. The student recognition is for the Cherokee School 50th Anniversary. And the Cherokee Tile Mosaic was created in the spring of 2012 by last year's 4th graders who were the 50th graduating class. And the project was the inspiration of Lisa Vilamos, Cherokee School Art Teacher. And she is here tonight with current 5th graders who helped create the mosaic. So, with that...
And I can hit this, Cornelius?
Mm-hmm. It might...
Is that touchy?
Excuse me.
Or should I just hit them?
There's a tissue there.
The next one?
Yep.
Okay.
Hi. I'm Lisa Vilamos, and I've been the art teacher at Cherokee School going on 11 wonderful years. In 2005, the Spirit of 67 funded a grant to help the 4th grade class that year to create a mosaic in the art room titled "Underwater." It stretches 20 feet long and is 3 feet tall, and something our current Cherokee Cheetahs and I enjoy seeing each day. Stemming from my love of ceramics, the process of mosaic making stuck with me. And in 2009, I wrote another spirit grant and made two 3-by-4-foot mosaics designed and created by the 4th graders that year. The Cherokee School Mosaic hangs in the foyer of our school, and the Music Speaks Mosaic coming up is next to the music room. In 2011, the 4th grade class helped to mosaic the pedestal that the Shepherd Boy, a sculpture by Sylvia Shaw Judson, stands on. And here it comes, too. By choosing the 4th grade classes to help in the creation of each mosaic, the kids feel that they are leaving a part of them behind for the next generations to enjoy as they head off to middle school. And that brings us to our latest endeavor, marking the 50th Anniversary of Cherokee School. I have two awesome students here representing last year's 4th grade class. They are the 50th 4th grade class to graduate from Cherokee, and this is Grace Gashidle and Scott Notes, and they're here to take you through the process of creating our anniversary mosaic.
When Dr. Shin asked Ms. Vilamos if we could make something to mark Cherokee's 50th birthday, my classmates and I knew right away that we wanted to do a mosaic.
We loved the other mosaics around the school and thought it'd be cool to contribute to the collection.
Since all of the other mosaics are made from broken tiles, we wanted to do something different.
While many kids were sad that they weren't going to smash tiles this time, we were excited that everyone was going to make their own tile that they could design.
Each 4th grade class brainstormed ideas for tiles. We wanted to showcase what Cherokee and school is all about.
We came up with character traits like teamwork and caring.
And fun events at school, like jumper for heart and exciting field trips.
Of course, you'll see Champ the Cheetah in highlights of grade-level units.
Like in 1st grade when we studied the rainforest.
We were so excited to get started. We decided to use red clay since all the other mosaics in the school were done with white.
Each 4th grader made at least one tile, adding and subtracting clay to get the tiles just right.
We estimated how many tiles we would need to cover a 2-by-4-foot piece of plywood.
Everyone chipped in and made smaller tiles for the border, too.
Then we let the tiles dry, and Ms. Vilamos fired them in the kiln.
Next, everyone glazed their tiles with brilliant colors, and then they were fired again.
We did all of this during class, which is 1 hour once a week.
And it took about 4 weeks to get this all finished.
Finally, we started laying out the tiles, arranging them just right.
After we laid them out, we glued the tiles down and let it dry.
Duke Duroye, 2004 alum, came by for a day to help Ms. Vilamos grout the entire piece.
And here's the end result.
The mosaic was hung in front of the foyer of Cherokee School, and everyone who came to the 50th Anniversary Celebration on October 12th got to enjoy it.
We couldn't be more proud to say that we helped to leave a lasting impression on our beloved elementary school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Vilamos. And one of the great things about being in this seat is we get to watch the proud parents over here with the cameras. This is terrific. Best seat in the house. So, thank you very much. It was a great celebration. A couple of other things on the Superintendent's Report is the enrollment, the 30-day enrollment. Last year, we were at a district-wide enrollment of 2034, and this year, we are at district-wide enrollment of 1940. So, we're 96 students shy of where we were last year. Also, I wanted to talk about the Q, but we're going to postpone that one until later on in the agenda for one of our coordinating curriculum reports and have Mr. Albus talk about that. I did want to read something from our DPM cross-country state runners, from Mrs. Sostra, who is, I don't know if you know Mrs. Sostra or not, but she's a Cherokee, isn't she? World's most enthusiastic teacher and coach here. And she writes to Dr. Hendrickson, "Dr. Hendrickson, thank you so much for asking. You are very thoughtful. After a pouring rain and many thunder and lightning calls, the IESA State Cross-Country Meet on Saturday, the Deerpath 3A Girls finally got their race off at 3 o'clock, which was supposed to be scheduled at 12:45. The girls persevered through very rough race conditions, including water and many muddy spots on the course, with four races already run before them. In addition, there was one mishap where one of the runners' heels got stepped on, and she had to run the entire race with only one spiked shoe. Talk about a gutsy race." It was very exciting at the awards ceremony to hear that Lake Forest Deerpath announced third place, a podium finish, out of 21 teams. The girls made school history, with finishing two years in a row in the top three. I'm extremely proud of the girls and how they raced today. All the girls definitely showed toughness and pride. It was a double exclamation point there. It was a total team effort, as we were only 5 points out of second place. Way to go, Deerpath Girls Cross Country. I'm very proud of everyone. We received a beautiful trophy to be displayed at Deerpath, and all the girls received a beautiful third-place team medal. So, number 45 was Alex Manley, who's an 8th grader. Number 55, Courtney Lee Schmidt, the 6th grader. Emma Milburn, a 7th grader. Haley Click, an 8th grader. And Erica Jones, an 8th grader. And they placed 55th, 57th, 75th, and 179th, respectively. Go Braves! Have a great day!" Exclamation point. Coach Sostra. And so, that is one of many good stories that we have to tell. And so, there's so many good things to report, it's sort of hard to narrow them down. But in the interest of time, just wanted to share a couple of our highlights, the best of which is having our students come and visit us. So, thank you. Mr. Simick, could I add to that? Late breaking news at that same track meet. Ken Kohler, DPM Boys Coach, reported that he had two boys that placed, finished 11th and 15th. A.T.N. Najman, Namon, A.T.N. Namon and Andrew Singh. Awesome finishes. It's the best season for us ever. Thank you, Dr. Anderson, for adding that. It's one of the things that I really appreciate when somebody says, "Hey, we have more good news to add into that because of other students on the team." So, thank you very much.
Oh, wait, Mrs. Wold, I have one other thing I wanted to do.
We have an opportunity to highlight one of our school board members as well. Neglected to think about that, we received a pen for one of our school board members this week. And this is for the Master School Board Member and Leader, Leader Shop Award in the last Division Dinner Meeting was presented. The award is for a Level 1 pen. Level 2 is an umbrella. And the Leader Shop Pen is awarded when a member has completed all core workshops. And so, one of the things that is very easily overlooked in this business is the fact that we have volunteers, community volunteers, that shoulder great responsibility and also spend a huge amount of time getting trained, reading board packets, working with administrators, and planning. And so, Mr. John Julian has received a very nice Parker Pen for his volunteer work.
Thank you, Mr. Simick. That brings us to public participation. Is there any member of the audience who would like to address the board? Seeing none, that brings us to our reports. The first report is emotional wellness. Mr. Simick?
Thank you, Mrs. Wold. And we're pleased to have...
Please, 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 Mrs. Leifman.
And she has brought two students with her to assist her in a presentation about the ongoing emotional wellness initiative that we have across the district. So, Mrs. Leifman?
Thank you. Courage is not the absence of fear, but rather the judgment that something else is more important than fear. When we reflect upon our journey with the Emotional Wellness Initiative, we feel it is important to note that we've continued to have the courage to dive deeper into the work we are doing. And we're thankful to the school board, school staff, parents, and broader community that continues to have the courage to make this initiative a priority. Good evening. I'm Rebecca Leifman, the District Coordinator of Student Development and the very proud Director of the Emotional Wellness Initiative. Members of the board, Mr. Simick and guests, thank you for your continued active partnership. It is the reason we are making intentional progress. As we look back at the 2011-2012 school year, we are inspired by the growth of skills and the unending passion to infuse social-emotional character development skills into all that we do. Five years ago, at the inception of the Emotional Wellness Initiative, I spoke to many parents, staff, and actually came to a school board meeting just like this one and asked the school board to reflect upon the question, "What skills would you wish for our students to, what skills would you wish be instilled in our students when they leave our district?" As you can imagine, words like persistence, responsibility, collaboration, ethical, competent, happy, and healthy were shared. I bet if I were to ask the same question again, the answers would be similar. In fact, I know they would be, based on some of the critical conversations Mr. Simick is having with some of ours, with our staff, as well as some of our parent groups. I'm happy and proud to say that since that time, we have not lost sight of the importance of our mission to intentionally teach, practice, and model the skills that are critical to school and life success. We remain committed to our character traits, which are the strong roots from which all other emotional wellness programming has blossomed. We envision these principles being woven through all that we do in school, in the home, and in the community. These are the skills we want our students not only to, these are the skills that we want our students not only to have leaving District 67, but looking ahead many years from now when our students graduate college, these, too, are the skills that we wish for How do we measure this? It's not typical with standardized tests or classroom tests, but rather more project-based and meaningful reflection. Sometimes, these are projects that we plan, such as the Bucket Fillers Program, WEB, which stands for Where Everybody Belongs, and Service Learning. But there are also projects we do not anticipate, such as a drastic change in administration at the school and district level and community crisis like we experienced last year. Someone once said, "You can really tell a person's character during times of challenge." I am confident that because of our intentional efforts to make social-emotional character development a priority in all that we do, we responded with skill and compassion to the many challenges we had over the past year. So, have we arrived? In some ways, yes. And in some ways, we've realized that there is no final destination. There is no there to arrive. However, we are committed to ongoing reflection and evaluation in regards to what is serving the growth of these skills and what is not, and making adjustments as necessary. The overall vision is larger than the programming we use to bring it to life. This is the work that has to be done. These are the skills that have to be taught. These are the skills that are critical during challenging times as well as times of ease. And these are the skills that are essential to school and life success. So, how do we do all this? Well, we have strong partners, of course. Research supports that when school and community groups combine to weave their efforts, we see the greatest impacts for all stakeholders, most importantly, for our students. Schools, parents, and community partners such as Croya, LEAD, the Community Task Force, the Charmed Foundation, and our Association of Parents and Teachers make this work possible and essential, and are essential. Moving into this year, we realize this is a time for reflection and evaluation. It's a time to ask critical questions, such as, "What's serving the growth and development of the Emotional Wellness Initiative? What isn't?" It's time to take a deeper dive into what is serving our students, staff, and community, and abandon what is not. At this time, I'd like to introduce Sarah Tomcetis and Anna Kohaut, two of our fantastic student leaders at Deerpath. They're joined virtually by Gracie Stockton and Tiana Belkey, who could not be here tonight, but wanted to share their experience at the Youth Summit, our first-ever Youth Summit, as well as offer words of wisdom to the community.
My name is Gracie Stockton, and I'm an 8th grader at Deerpath Middle School. Being a leader sometimes requires you to be able to fulfill other commitments creatively. Last month, I had the pleasure, along with 100 other 8th graders, of attending the Youth Summit 2012. We all met and discussed various topics that we thought needed to be addressed, not just what the adults thought. We had a voice, and it was a great opportunity to get that feeling of empowerment that we can make a difference. I, along with about nine others, came back and presented our solutions to topics such as balance, school life, and peer pressure, that night, to the community. Now, I'd like to introduce Tiana and Anna to elaborate on our ideas.
Hi, I'm Tiana. Along with these other girls, I presented a few weeks ago at the Youth Summit on peer pressure and other social issues. The group I was in came up with "Acceptance is Difference" as our campaign. By putting this campaign into action, we are creating a better learning environment
Hi, my name is Anna Kohaut, and I am an 8th grader at Deerpath Middle School. Striving for excellence and seeking a balance, that is our district's motto, and we would like to live by this. But right now, this isn't quite happening. Our students are experiencing imbalanced life between school and after-school activities. Another factor of imbalanced life is home challenges. Students need someone to talk to, and the schools can help on this if they know that they have someone to rely on. They, there could be counselors at school that they can go to at the beginning of year to get to know them so that they are comfortable and know that they have someone at school to talk to. This is just the start, and I'm looking forward to working with this to make it better.
Hello, I'm Sarah Tomcetis, and tonight, we've heard some really great plans and ideas to help the well-being of our student body. As you can see, peer pressure has become a much more relevant problem in the past years. As cliche as it sounds, acceptance is the difference. Every day, our students struggle with the balance between home and school life. Our district's motto, striving for excellence, seeking a balance, is what we ask our fellow classmates to follow. But now, ask yourselves, what have you done to help our students? And more importantly, what can you do? And on one final note, my peers and I would like to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to attend the Youth Summit and to continue our work afterwards.
Thank you for your time this evening. Are there any questions, or are we going to move? For the students, or for me?
Um, I guess for both. So, I just want to make sure I understand the process. So, you attended the Youth Summit, and you shared some ideas or probably did some brainstorming. And then, it sounds like you came up with some concrete ideas that you wanted to try to implement. And so, then what was the next, how did this go about going from an idea at the Youth Summit to, "Let's try this and see how it works"?
Well, actually, today, even, like, just today, during our homeroom period, we took a set, I know, we had a meeting of all the kids who had went to Youth Summit about how we did want to carry on our ideas. And I think we're planning on just keeping on meeting and finally discovering how we're going to do it, because we're not quite sure yet.
A work in process.
Definitely. It was, it's really important to us that after the Youth Summit, that we continue to empower our students. We heard them loud and clear when they said they, they need the adult support, and here's how. And one of the ways how was just to keep talking about it and to give them a platform to meet and talk. And so, that, when, when we met today, we had about 70% of the students just at Deerpath. We had 35 students from Deerpath, and there were 100 students altogether, including the neighboring schools. And we had about 70% of our students return today to talk about ways that they want to continue moving forward. And really, we're putting it in their, in their hands and just kind of providing a platform. So, we're really proud of them.
I think we're all really proud of them. So, I, I'm proud of you, too.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I would just say, I went to the evening presentation at the Youth Summit, and there were actually two other board members there also. And it was just really powerful to see and great, it seemed like a great program. And Dr. Reinicki, I think, from Northwestern, was very impressive. But the most impressive thing, obviously, was the kids and the work they'd put into all the, on this very important topic. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. This brings us to the Illinois Youth Survey Summary and Complete Survey. Mr. Simick?
Thank you, Mrs. Wold. And related topic to our students and the stresses under which they live and the pressures on them, we have some data that's been collected, and Mr. Moline will run us through that. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. Rebecca and the Emotional Wellness Mentors are truly among the individuals that inspire me the most, continually inspire me with the work that they do. So, how does someone like me try to give back to them? By analyzing data, of course. And now, I'm going to add Gracie, Tiana, Anna, and Sarah to the, to the list of individuals who inspire me. And so, the idea in, in my way of thinking is to supply data to these individuals and really talk through it and look at, "How are we doing in terms of the things that we're trying to change? And are our efforts making a difference? And what do we need to start attending to more?", and those types of things. So, that's how I try to give back. All right. In terms of the Illinois Youth Survey, it's one of the tools that we can use along those lines. And what it does is it provides important information, local information, to us, to participating schools and districts in Illinois. And actually, there's a large amount of participation now. Participation seems to increase every, this is a biannual survey, or maybe that's not the right way to say it. It happens every two years. And each, each time, it seems like more and more schools are participating, and, and we're actually participating more each time as well in terms of now, now implementing it through grade 6 through 12, whereas we initially started as a high school-only survey. So, we're finding it useful. It's very well-designed, and it allows us some comparative information. So, not just, "How are we doing, looking at ourselves?", but compared to Lake County, compared to the state, gives us some comparative information. These are some of the types of items that are addressed on the survey. Alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use, beliefs about drug use, health and nutritional behavior, or health and nutritional behaviors, feelings about school, family support, and rules about alcohol use. It's really quite a, quite a broad survey, now containing also information about, about school climate, bullying, some things that we really are emphasizing. So, it's really helpful for us to get this data and to look carefully at it. In terms of substance use first, what we're continuing to see are low rates of use among our 6th and 8th grade population. And now, this year, for the first time, we also surveyed 7th grade and found the same, very similar, low rates of use relative to our past data, as well as Lake County norms. We have not yet seen the state data yet. It hasn't been released. But relative to both of those types of comparisons, continued low rates of use, as well as, as I said before, this is our first time assessing grade 7 students, which the only issue with that is we don't really have comparative data at this time. This is basically what I'm speaking of here, is, you know, a graph. Basically, it's important to see that this was a sort of a flipped graph in the sense that we're looking at non-use of substances. So, so bigger bars are better. And what we are seeing, the red dots inside each bar, those are the Lake County data compared to the bars, which are our data. Seeing in every case, either less use or the same use, if that makes sense. And I would say, even though that, you know, that's a good thing in a sense, I would say we can do better, would be my interpretation. And, and I think it validates our work that we're doing in our, in the community. And basically, you know, the longer that we can prevent students from, from using substances, the better in terms of all sorts of research, you know, showing up about that. So, I think even though we're seeing compared to Lake County schools, and about 2/3rds of middle schools are participating now, so it's a pretty darn good sample. And, you know, again, seeing compared to that indicator, seeing low levels of use, I think we can do better. It would be my, would be my view. This, this survey also gets at kind of correlates or other indicators that kind of helped us to understand what we're seeing. One of them that we think is especially useful is the clarity of family rules, as well as perceived adult disapproval of, of using substances. And here's a finding that we've, that we've actually found repeatedly now in two, two straight surveys, and I think we'll find it forever, is that students who report clear family rules about alcohol and drug use are much less likely to drink. And as well, the onset age of reporting beginning use of alcohol is substantially later. So, I guess that's just kind of a encouragement to families to really continue to, to, to build those clear family rules and, and make sure that your, your students understand that, that use is, is not appropriate. So, here's something under, under that that kind of supports that even more. 85% of 8th grade students say it would be perceived by most adults as wrong or very wrong for kids their age to drink alcohol. That's great. We can maybe even make it higher, I think, so. Some additional Illinois Youth Survey information, again, regarding bullying, school climate, mental health, and health and nutrition. A lot of data that you get within this survey, and I'm kind of giving you a comp- Uh, a lot of data that you get within this survey, and I'm kinda giving you a compressed version tonight, just for, from, for time purposes. I'd like to emphasize, though, I'd like to emphasize bullying, uh, because that's really been a big key initiative for us for the last, uh, I'd, I'd say ever since I started, six years ago, we've really, it's really been something that we've focused on, um, in various different ways. And so it's really important to us to look at, uh, our students' reports of bullying. This, this particular survey looks at four types, um, being called names, so more verbal, uh, threat, threats, being threatened, uh, more physical, being hit, uh, kicked or pushed. And also now, this is new this year, uh, cyberbullying question, um, which is, you know, that's sort of the, uh, the new, the new thing that really, uh, we're all very focused upon. So the blue bars on this graph are, uh, our students' eighth grade, uh, sixth grade reports, I'm sorry. And the, uh, the, the bars on the right, the white bars, are the Lake County students', um, reports. I actually see this as, um, at least from a comparison standpoint, very good news that our students are reporting substantially less bullying in our school, uh, than they are in, uh, Lake County schools as a whole. So I think this, uh, really reinforces the efforts that have been happening, the, uh, the programming that Rebecca and, and others have really set up, um, the reporting system, all sorts of things that we've been working on. Uh, bus, bus, uh, norms, and bodacious bus families is what Rebecca refers to them as. These are all things that make a difference with this, and, and I think that this was something that I felt very positively about, and I'm really excited to share back with the team.
Hey, Joe, have those gaps opened up over time, the last five or six years when this has been focused on?
Yes, I'm, uh, I'm seeing, this is sort of a new phenomenon, uh, that I'm seeing here. I'm seeing, uh, I'm seeing, you know, my viewpoint is that these are pretty tremendous gaps between, uh, other sixth-grade schools. And, and, uh, this is, uh, this is a, a time period when we have been really focused on decreasing bullying. So, uh, so yes, to answer your question, this is, this is new, and it's exciting, from my perspective. Now, in eighth grade, uh, you know, again, uh, I'd say posi- positive results, but not, not quite so positive. I think we're seeing, uh, more similar, more normative, uh, uh, data in our school compared to Lake County schools. And I think that just pushes us to really look at, uh, what we can do, uh, to really improve, uh, improve that, as well.
So these guys, so these guys have had it the longest, right? The eighth graders would have it longer than the sixth graders.
Yes.
Why do you think the gap's closing?
Um, the gaps clo- well, these are, these are two different gr- yeah. Yeah. Well, a couple, a couple things to note. These are two different cohorts of students, so there could be cohort things that are happening. We also can and should took a cr- take a critical look at what's happening in eighth grade, in terms of our curriculum. You know, take a critical look and see potentially, maybe in sixth grade, our efforts, our, um, our, you know, more, more focused or tailored, or, or more effective. That's possible, but that's only one possibility. Again, another possibility is that the sixth and eighth-grade cohorts are different, and, and, you know, there's different group, group things going on in that, in that regard as well. I, uh, would have to be real careful with statements, but I think it's gonna be a real, um, uh, important discussion piece for, for our groups, to try to see, try to make sense out of the data.
Yeah, I know, I know you're very cautious about, about drawing conclusions, and I, I appreciate that. But, what I'd like to, you know, and, and we don't need to make a big deal out of this.
Yeah.
But since these guys have been, have been exposed to character and anti-bullying programs in extra two years, I wonder why the, the numbers are getting closer together than further apart. And I know that you're coming at this from an analysis point, you know, point of view.
Yes.
But I'd like to kinda get behind the numbers.
Yeah.
Because the, the, because I, I think there'd be an interesting answer back there.
Yeah, well, I have the same exact questions as you, so, yeah, absolutely. Um, you know, on the bright side, I think the sixth-grade data was really good, and this is, um, from my perspective. And this is good, you know, uh, because again, we have lower rates in every single bar, except for that cyberbullying where we're identical. This is good, the, the, from a, from a comparison standpoint, the sixth is really good. So, um, that'd be, that'd my, that's my view of it, at least. But I agree, those are important questions. Yeah, yep.
If, could I just ask one other question? I mean, have you ca- carried this on to the ninth through twelfth grade, or do you look at that?
Yes, this survey actually, uh, last year was administered, uh, all, uh, every single grade level, sixth through, uh, twelfth grade. And again, it's administered every two years.
Joe, these questions are asked within the individual year, not cumulatively, is that correct?
Correct. It's, uh, one administration in the spring, um, a spring survey.
But the question is presented, have you been bullied this school year?
Oh, yes.
If you're an eighth grader, or is it since you were in sixth grade?
Or, or is it something like, have you ever been cyberbullied?
In the past twelve months?
In the past twelve months, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, good question. Thank you.
So are there, one more question, I'm sorry. The ninth to twelfth grade numbers, do they show higher or lower than, like, the co- like, like County?
Actually, bullying rates tend to basic, uh, and this is national phenomenon. They tend to kinda increase, increase up to eighth grade, and then they s- sorta tend to decrease over time. I don't know if it's hormonal, or what, what the case may be, but that's kind of a national phenomenon, so. But still, no excuse for bullying, and we're trying to get it down to, you know, the bare minimum, down to, down to zero would be our ultimate goal. Okay, uh, this was-
Jeff, it, it also seems to bear out that, at least my recollection is, seventh and eighth grades are the toughest grades for a kid. Figure out who you are, and get along with the other students, and it, it's sort of, you know, it'd be interesting to see from ninth, tenth.
Yes.
Is eighth grade really the peak?
Yeah.
And if it was, yeah, but as you're saying, it wouldn't be a surprise intuitively, right?
Yeah.
Well, but it would, it is kinda to me, because you would, you, okay, so, it would be like, if somebody's been exposed to character education in the elementary school, and in sixth, seventh, eighth grade, you'd expect it to have some accumu- I, I would expect it to have some cumulative effect over time.
Except if you looked at third, fourth, fifth grade, I bet you see even less. And there's really not training at that. It, I think it naturally, it's just a rough age. And I think even with training, you're fighting against that natural tendency, uh.
Yeah. I think, I, I, my interpretation is similar to that. Um, still, we've got some pretty, pretty inspired people on the ground, working on it every day, and we're, we're gonna decrease it to the extent possible.
I don't mean to say we, we shouldn't be pushing even, you know, hard to get it down.
Yep, yep.
But that, it's not surprising, that's the hardest or most difficult age group to deal with. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, Joe, I have a question that wasn't in this graph, but about reporting. I'm not sure whether it's in this report or the next report, but the reporting of, of bullying. Several years ago, the board put a lot of effort into a task force, which I know Julia spent a lot of time on.
Yes.
And we created this anonymous, um, bullying reporting.
Yes.
Um, vehicle, which is now online.
Yes.
And there are advantages to anonymous reporting, and it looks like the numbers have kind of drifted downward. Now you could say, that's great, there's less bullying, but also the, to play devil's advocate for a moment, you could say that maybe we're far away from the initiative, and it's just not on the radar, or people figure, I'm not gonna bother to report it, 'cause nothing will be done.
Yeah.
And I was wondering if you could enlighten us, if you know, some of the sort of more global, national-type studies about anonymous reporting, and, and what does that mean?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I guess the first part, uh, I definitely wanted to commend you for noticing that. I think that, uh, the, uh, the, the reports have declined similarly to our, um, to, to what we're seeing in this data. So it's sort of, uh, when you have multiple indicators saying the same thing, that's always a good thing. Um, and, uh, I definitely noticed that as well, getting decreased reports. And I think we can rule out that it's, that it's due to the fact that students know about it less, or that it's being advertised less, 'cause I know that the principals are very diligent about advertising it and getting the information out. Um, so I think it really, truly is a reflection of, of less bullying happening. So, and I'm glad to be able to say that. Um, feels, feels good. Um, but I didn't answer your second question, or your actual question.
But more toward the research about, is there any research on whether reporting, how, how we should interpret re- reporting of incidents or the lack of reporting? How, how do we interpret that?
Yeah, yeah. I don't, uh, actually have an answer from a research point of view. I have, um, thinking on it, which is that, uh, it could reflect students not being aware of it, or not thinking adults are gonna do anything about it. It could reflect that. I don't feel that that would be the case in our, uh, district, because our, uh, teachers and administrators are so well-trained, uh, to deal with these issues, and their advertising, again, they're getting the information out about it, it existing. So decreased reports in itself could not necessarily, um, prove that there's less bullying. But I feel like in this case, it actually is indicative of less bullying.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. And then, uh, lastly, I wanted to highlight a, um, uh, mental health portion of the survey. Uh, again, uh, just understanding that our, you know, our community did go through a very difficult time period, um, and we're very much attuned to, um, uh, reports of depression, for example, uh, which is, which is sur- uh, a survey item on this, on this particular survey. And what we did find was that sixteen percent of eighth-grade participants, um, across Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, Knollwood, uh, reported experiencing depressin- depression in the past twelve months. This compares to twenty-five percent of Lake County eighth-grade participants reporting, um, experiencing depression. So, uh, you know, sixteen percent is too much, no matter what. Um, but this gives you a little bit of a normative sense of what's happening with the eighth-grade students. I just wanted to, you know, share that information, because I know that it's, uh, um, it's information that people want, and they would like to know. And, um, so yeah, I just wanted to share that. Um, I guess, uh, you know, the, the, the big thing now is now what, and, and, uh, it is a community effort. First, definitely need to continue to highlight, uh, Leeds' tremendous work in the community, and they're really working hand-in-hand with us, with all, with all sorts of different, uh, different initiatives, middle school programming, um, and, and really, uh, doing a great job with the parent piece of this, of this work. Evident, and there is evidence that these efforts are yielding improvements. I think we're seeing that, uh, more and more with our data analyses. And then Croya, of course, does a wonderful job with their work, and, and, uh, and we continue to partner with them as well. And, and, and this is a key piece. I think we see, we see this type of, um, um, you know, mental health, uh, bullying, uh, climate. We see all these things as, as community sort of issues, where we need to all work together. So in terms of next steps, continued development of the Emotional Wellness Initiative, we're in great hands, uh, with Rebecca and our Emotional Wellness Mentors. Increased programming and community collaboration for parent education, coordination of drug and alcohol education, and prevention programming across districts. We have a lot of articulation going on that really helps us in that regard, being able to team up with the high school, as well as with, uh, Lake Bluff helps a tremendous amount. Develop opportunities for student involvement and leadership in programming. I think we saw, uh, a taste of that tonight, very firsthand account of, um, of that with, with our students. And students do have the best ideas, by the way. And, uh, middle school group to be guided by a community coalition. Those are some of the next steps that are, that are in process now. Okay, so, um, with that, uh, did you have any questions in the interim? Otherwise, I'll kinda turn it over to Dr. Cooley, and we can take questions at the end.
And I think, uh, while we're getting the, uh, next, uh, slides up, I could add that in your, uh, board report, there's quite extensive package of, uh, material and reports, including some comparisons to previous years, so that gets at some of the questions you've asked, so please do look at that. Uh, also, so that you're aware, uh, we did a similar, actually much more lengthy report for, uh, the high school a week or so ago, and that should be posted as well. So if you wanna look at that, those high school years, um, please feel free to do so. Uh, to get at the one question regarding the bullying, I happened to have their survey with me, and, um, the name calling goes down to seventeen percent, so if you recall, I think it was about at thirty-nine, uh, in eighth grade. So it really does, as Joe mentioned, significantly go down. What's interesting to me about the twelfth grade, though, is the bu- uh, cyberbullying, which is a brand-new question on the survey, is at seventeen percent, which is not all that different than what we saw in eighth grade. So, and that gets at just those texting, harassing, that, those kinds of th- things through that medium. So, um, the, one last thing toward the high school. As you saw, um, how the county averages, and how we're in good stead in eighth grade, unfortunately, that deteriorates significantly in through the high school years. And, and, you know, a little bit in eighth, uh, ninth, a little bit in tenth, and then by twelfth grade, we're very, very divergent in the wrong way. So please do feel free to look at that survey, and, um, it is an important issue to our community. Uh, we're talking about these goals tonight, or these, uh, the Emotional Wellness Initiative, because it's directly to ra- to relate it to one of the board goals. And our Student Development Vision Statement, uh, three, uh, says that, um, by the year 2015, we hope that through, um, certain measures, that a hundred percent of our students will report a positive perception. Um, the measures that we use are twofold, uh, primarily, though, is the, uh, School-wide Behavior Support Survey, which is, um, given every spring. Uh, it's a thirty-four-question survey. We give it grades two through eight. And again, you have extensive information in your board packet regarding the survey. Um, but I am just pleased to report, um, that the initiatives that Rebecca, um, mentioned, and the passion that she brings to this topic, we're really seeing, um, some change on the survey, finally, and it's been a slow incremental change. Um, so our hope to get to a hundred percent, right now, across the grades, we're a little bit over ninety percent of our students overall have a positive, uh, perception of the school climate. Um, and in particular, uh, we really saw the increase in grades five through eight. So we've, we've, um, the lower grades has been consistently very strong to, so to see that change in grades five through eight is, is, um, just, uh, a wonderful testament to the things that have been going on, like web, like the changes to the advisory program, and, um, a number of, of other factors. And in particular, I just wanted to mention a couple of things that have changed, that again, seem to be directly related to the initiative. Um, the questions that seem to make a difference that were a little bit higher in the middle school had to do with safety. So we have a very safe environment, but yet I think these initiatives are making kids feel more safe in a variety of locations. Um, uh, e- each one of them was a little, was a few points higher. Um, also, um, the way students perceive each other, if you recall from previous surveys, tends to be the lowest, um, section of the survey. So, are my, are my classmates kind to me, um, and to others, and those kinds of things? Which is sad to us, to think that they're looking at their peers and not feeling that way. Relatively so. I mean, there's still very strong rapport, but it is the lowest among the survey. So across those items, too, we saw some change. So how, uh, do you think the other students treat each other fairly, or do they treat them friendly? Are they helpful? All those questions went up, uh, in a, a very nice way through the middle school years. And as Joe had mentioned, that bodacious bus families, every question related to the buses was significantly better, and actually had the greatest amount of growth. So I was very pleased to see that, and to share that with Rebecca. Which reminds me, uh, when, um, Rebecca was whispering in my ear regarding the youth survey, one of the goals that she has this year is to work with students in these surveys. So, and we've done that in the past to a certain degree. I'm not sure about the Illinois Youth Survey, but she's gonna have the students dig at that data and say, what does this mean to us? So I think that that's gonna be a positive change. The second part that we look at with the student development, um, goal, is the disciplining incidents, which we've been talking about. Um, the way when we first formulated this, is we looked at, um, the fact that the middle school years, you wouldn't expect to eliminate discipline as a whole. Um, that is a, is a wonderful, uh, time in a student's life, where they experiment with all kinds of, uh, different kinds of behavior. And so to say that we want all students to have zero is not even, um, reasonable. Um, so what we looked at with our goal was more than one, so recidivism, I believe is what you would call that. We don't want them to have more than one. Let them make a mistake, let them learn from the mistake. So that's the area that we've been looking at most. You can see I put the twenty-eleven results, um, there next to it. It did go up a little bit, but our, our benchmark year, the year before, it's still a considerably, um, better result than, than twenty-ten. And then the bullying reports going down to just twenty-eight reports of bullying, um, from forty-four, and it was an even higher number, I believe, in twenty-ten. So, um, yes, it's being reported, but those, these are the actual incidents that get to the, um, Assistant Principal's office, and are reported like that. Some of them come through the reporting system. Um, but, so I, that's a significant drop, and I think very good news. Um, but not to rest on our laurels, we certainly are, will continue to do all the things we do, um, related to that. Lastly, for me, I just wanted to give you a, a very quick update on the Community Wellness Task Force. Uh, as you all know, I've been keeping you up to date, that there was a, a large meeting in June, a resource assessment, community-wide, where we had about, hmm, over seventy-five community members, all, all the different organizations. And, uh, we met, um, then Dr. Reinicki from Northwestern University, who, um, is provided to the task force as a consultant, um, by the generosity of Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital. Um, they've been providing all of his services, uh, again, a very, very generous donation on their part, just to have him available to us. So he kind of synthesized all of that data from the June seventh event, and he applied, um, best practice research to what he found through that. So what resources that we had, how we ta- could take them a next step. So he has some terrific recommendations for us, and they revolve around, uh, students who are in immediate need, uh, students, um, who are headed toward a need, and then those students who just generally, we should be doing cut- some kind of efforts for everyone in these areas. So his, the, um, his recommendations go across those kind of three spectrums, but also then, what, what should parents do? What should schools do? What should the hospital do? What should the other organizations do? So it's a quite detailed plan, and I just wanna highlight some actual action steps, just a few, um, that have occurred as a result of his recommendations and the task force as well. Uh, one of the exciting things, just a couple of things from Lake Forest Hospital. Uh, you might be, be a little bit aware of this, 'cause you might have actually experienced it yourself. Um, pediatricians are now doing quick screenings on adolescents as they come through for their annual school ser- um, health, uh, what do they call it? annual school health, what do they call it? Physicals, thank you. All of a sudden, it wasn't going to make sense. So, and not only, they're being leaders in this too, because not every pediatrician goes through the hospital, but they're trying to, to make this, you know, more pervasive so that all pediatricians will be looking at this. And what they're doing is they're taking the youngsters aside, saying, Mom, you know, go out of the office, we're going to, you know, sit quietly here for a minute. And so, and what we've heard is that some of the pediatricians are uncovering some things that they might not have learned otherwise. The, the, Lake Forest High School, of course, has been very active in a lot of directions, just one thing I'll highlight there. We've, all of our health teachers and all of our social workers and actually one of our deans is going to go through a high-level training on a program called Adolescent Depression Awareness Program out of Johns Hopkins, Dr. Karen Schwartz, and they're going to be doing that training next week and infusing that into their curriculum. Croya, I put a little handout on your, on the table there. They've been the recipient of a grant through United Way and the Buchanan Funds to do some, some support either to individuals or families. It's going to be free, so we don't have to, you know, have that barrier when we see a family that might be in need to get some, some quick help. Lead, again, just some highlights here. As a result of the issues, they've started now a clinical advisory board in addition to their general board. So they have a board made up of different types of mental health professionals and physicians and so forth that are going to advise them as they work with families. They've also added a panic link on their website, which actually brings people back to local resources. So very exciting initiative there. The Lake Forest Police Department initiated a crisis communication hub across our, all of our organizations to the high-level leaders. There was a lot of confusion at the point of crisis where different people were getting all different information, so this was an important step, step to take. And lastly, strong partnership with Lake Forest College. They're going to be helping to assemble the private providers in the community around mental health and giving them Dr. Reinicki's recommendations, saying, guess what? Dr. Reinicki recommended these screeners, he's recommended these programs, you know, just, just so you're aware, you know, we can't, you know, compel them to do these things, but just to kind of coordinate efforts. And so to report these things to you, I'm just, you know, feel really good about it. It's a lot of movement, a lot of great things for the community, and it's really just the beginning. So we'll be meeting again in December and have a number of other recommendations that are in the works, and so I'll share them with you in the future. Any questions on any of this?
I have a, a sort of a suggestion. Going through the, the very valuable studies that, that you've all provided to us, we've seen this pattern of the, the data changes from the sixth grade to the eighth grade. And by the time we get to eighth grade, we have numbers like 21% bullying through internet or text messages, 16% so sad or hopeless over two weeks, they stop their usual activities, bias-based bullying, 27%, physical fighting, 25%. So these numbers are, in, in my view, significant. And then we've also noticed that it, it trends off after high school. I was thinking about how, one point of significance to me that resonated is that the tragedies of the high school were fairly young high schoolers. So here we have these, you know, numbers trending up in eighth grade and then these tragedies at, at the young end of the high school spectrum. In looking at the recommendations for Lake Forest High School, we have the signs and symptoms of depression training that you spoke of. I personally feel it'd be very valuable for our district to implement this at a younger age so that maybe sixth to eighth grade teachers could go through this training, maybe through a spirit grant, or maybe there's possible budget allocation so that we can catch, you know, pediatricians are one point of contact, but I think if we work together as a community, we have several points where we could just monitor our student population. It would be a really good thing.
We did include, and I just highlighted the high school, but we did include middle school staff on all the training that we've done up to this point, the gatekeeper training and those things, as well as then I'm going to maybe rely on Joe a little bit. The, the, the online tool, learning tool that we're using is also available in District 67, and I know the high school's requiring it for all of their faculty to go through it. It's a short, you know, video module of, of learning the signs and symptoms. And I, I don't know if it's a required module in 67, but we could consider that at the middle school years or highly recommend it, that kind of thing. But your, your point is well taken. We've been examining curriculum and examining the other things that we do as well. So we're not, we are very aware that at, at middle school, that we really need to start looking at it there. And Dr. Reinicki is advising us on that. Erica's Lighthouse, in fact, has been very involved and, and has been working with Rebecca and working with us for a couple of years, but we're probably ramping that up at this point too. So we share your concern.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Yes, Mr. Simic?
Because I'd just like to say thank you to Dr. Cooley and Mrs. Leafman for the ongoing work on this and Joe in his discreet and humble way, also crunching the numbers and making these graphic representations so that we can see things. And just want to encourage, continue to encourage the work that is, that is done. New to the district, obviously, but one of the things that comes out loud and clear from all the various parent groups that I've talked to is that they're, they continue to be incredibly interested in raising well-rounded children that do well academically, obviously, but also the words balanced and happy come up an awful lot in terms of what parents hope for most. And obviously, part and parcel of that is being safe. And so, thank you for your work and continued success. Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to our board committee reports. First, we have the Board Education Committee.
I will be delivering the report in lieu of Ms. Fisher, who's not here this evening. There is no report, but the educate, because the education committee did not meet, but it will be meeting on November 13th at 8:15 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. This brings us to the Board Finance and Operations Committee. Lori Rose?
Our Board Finance and Operations Committee did not meet last month. We're scheduled for quarterly meetings and I don't think I have the date of the next one. Mr. Simic, do we have?
I think there's one in November. We will get that date. I know there's a regularly scheduled one for the next quarter, but we will get that date out. That concludes our board committee reports and brings us to our liaison reports. First, we have the North Suburban Special Education District and Mr. Penderski.
The North Suburban Special Education District met on October 10th and the following were just, the following topics were discussed. I think the finance committee meeting was the most interesting. The, the district faces a challenge with their healthcare coverage. It's falling under the Cadillac, the Cadillac provision of the new healthcare laws, so they are, which carry a significant penalty. So they're reviewing their coverage options. The transportation contract's under review. They are sending the auditor bid, auditor contract out to bid, and they're seeking vendors with a stronger background in internal controls. And the, I think that's really, there's a lot of detail in that meeting, but I think the emphasis on the internal controls and how to manage, you know, and what to do with the balance, with the issue of the fund balance, whether or not to hold our money in their school district, remains up in the air. Finally, the next meeting will be on November 14th at 7:30 p.m. in the Rubeloff Center at the NSSCD campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penderski. The Illinois Association of School Boards and Ed Redd, Mr. Anderson?
The Illinois Association of School Boards has completed the online training course for the mandatory open meeting act, which is required for all school members, school board members. And it's required for all of us to take it by January, by December 31st. And you can go to the website and, and sign up for it.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Yes, so we all need to be clicking on that link and completing our training. The Curriculum Coordinating Committee, I, I did meet, I believe we have a report. Lori Rose was not in attendance, but...
No, I was ill that day. I'm going to ask Mr. Henderson to give a, actually, Ms. Fisher attended on behalf of the board, but she's not here tonight. So if Andy could give a short precis of what the board heard?
You bet. And actually, I'm going to pass the buck because we, we took the opportunity of the CCC to meet with the architects when they came to do some presentations and get some feedback, and Alan Elvis is going to talk about that.
At your place is a furniture layout for the design of what we've come to know as the cube on the east end of the Deer Path campus. And I apologize to the audience members, we don't have one for everyone, so if, if we, if you would glance at that and then maybe pass it down so everybody gets some idea of what we're talking about. And for people who might be watching this at home, next month, we will have more of an audiovisual presentation in coordination with our architect. Just to give you a point of reference, if you look at the sheet in front of you where it says Perkins and Will up in the right-hand corner, right to the left of that are a set of double doors. Those were the entrances, for those of you who had bent over to the old administrative offices there. So it kind of gets you oriented to what's, what's there. And this project would involve the renovation of about 5,000 to 6,000 square feet. Would take in the old Beecher, Baggett rooms and the administrative offices. There was a hallway when you came in those double doors. That hallway would be removed to open up the space, and then you can see the configuration and the layout. This came about probably from over a year's worth of meetings of the design committee that was comprised of students and staff, correct Andy? Meeting with the architects. So they would meet and talk, the architects would synthesize that back into a drawing, show it back to the committee, and they'd talk some more and make revisions. And I think everybody's very excited and, and happy with the way this has evolved and the final plan. So where are we with that? Couple of weeks ago, we had what was called the 50% documents done, and at that point, you can send those out and you can get price estimates, and we did that. However, those were a little bit late in coming to us. And so we had some discussions with the architect about how can we accelerate? How can we get going? And they put more resources on it. About a week and a half later, we had the full construction documents. Well, we're still about two weeks away from getting the estimates done, so we stopped that process. Why incur that cost when we have the full docs and we can bid it? And so that's where we're at. Tomorrow, there is a mandatory pre-bid meeting and the bid specs will be issued. And I think we're scheduled to open bids on November 2nd. In addition to that, the design committee met again last week with the architect to pick finishes and colors. And from that meeting, the architect will assemble what's called a finish board, if you've ever done home renovations and the carpet and the color schemes. And then we'll plan on coming forth at the November meeting and laying that out and showing this more, as I said, visually for you. Finally, the furniture layout and the recommendations have been received from the architect, and we've distributed those out to three different vendors. We're going to ask them to price them, and then we're going to coordinate another meeting with the committee and have them come in and talk about what's being recommended, functionality of it, and then maybe some alternates that might be better value as far as price without compromising the quality. Based on those discussions, then we'll assemble a package, either bid it or make a recommendation to buy it through a purchasing co-op. Again, we anticipate, if everything goes well, to bring all of this to you in November. We would like to start construction then right away, and that puts us at about a mid-January completion date, mid to late January, right now. Other than that, I, I think that's it. Again, in November, we will bring a more visual presentation to show you, but it's really, it's starting to progress now, and it, again, everybody's really excited about the project.
Any questions, board members?
I just had a couple. It looks like an amazing project. Will there be sort of multiple people that will be expected to bid on this? And getting furniture, just my experience is that furniture takes like always longer than you, you think and stuff. So the construction period would take a couple of months, but is it idea where, would this be ready for next semester or for most likely next year?
We're assuming, we're hoping for an eight-week lead time, but realistically, it's probably going to be an eight to 12-week lead time.
I'd said another question. What happens to the library in Deer Path after this project? Does it change in its use or?
We are, we still need a, a great spot for our time zone program for the elementary students to come over, as well as we have culture fairs for sixth and, or fifth and sixth grade students. So we would use that as a large learning space, as well as in-service presentations, et cetera. Kind of like we're using the current time zone space now.
So will there be a library in the library or?
The, the cube will be the library and technology fused together, the creativity, collaboration, communication area. All the books will be there as well, in the, in this cube.
Okay, thank you.
How is the budget for this being determined?
Well, the original plan was to get the 50% documents, send them out for estimates. And we have a rough idea of about, we're hoping 300,000 to 400,000 on the construction part. Because of the delay in getting the drawings, we, we're kind of bypassing that process right now and just bidding it. And if, so let's talk about that for a second. We feel pretty good about the estimates and the price range because of what's involved here. There's some demolition, but we're not opening up roofs, we're not digging holes. So hopefully, our exposure for unknowns and surprises is somewhat minimalized. But if the project came in, say double that, let's say it came in at $800,000, we'd probably take a step back and ask why and walk through that process and then have discussions about, do we want to proceed forward at that price? What does that mean? But I hate to speculate on those things until we see, see what happens. But right now, we're estimating somewhere probably about 400,000 or so on construction costs, probably another 100,000 or so on furniture.
Does that include the architecturals?
I do not think so.
Do you know what we've spent to date on that?
No, but we can get that fairly quick.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions, board members? We'll be hearing a lot more about this in the coming month or two months. Thank you very much, Mr. Alvis. Okay, this brings us to the Spirit of 67 Foundation Report. The Spirit met on Tuesday, October 9th. We started out the meeting with an explanation of the Live, Work, Play app that applies to our Lake Forest community. It is a free app, and you may see it in a number of different shops and vendors in town. By downloading this app, you then will, can get coupons from local merchants. And in addition, the Spirit card that is sent to member families who join the Spirit will also work with this app. Mr. Simic did attend the meeting and asked his insightful questions, and I can see cards that he's collecting here, so he gathered feedback from the entire Spirit Board. Megan Morris reported that next year, the goal is to have a Spirit of 67 Week that is community-wide. So we will be hearing more about that in the coming months. The board is also really delving into looking at the donation patterns over the past three years. This year's year-to-date contributions are $61,137 versus $59,691 at this time last year, which sound very similar, except for the fact that this year's number does include a donation of $10,000 from Grainger. So there is a lot of analysis about how to increase both the number of families that are donating to the Spirit as well as increasing the average donation.
What is the participation rate?
It is, at this point in the year, it's in the 20, mid twenties range, I think it's around 24%. It usually gets up into the mid forties by the end of the year. The real goal is to get it above 50%, so that, which is very helpful in seeking corporate donors. And I don't want to be remiss because there was the, Fall Benefit Luncheon was held last Friday. I know Mr. Simic attended and was unsuccessful in his bid attempts. So he'll have to work on his bidding skills for next year. That concludes the Spirit of 67 report. Are there any other committees that board members attended and would like to? Are there any other committees that board members attended and would like to report? Seeing none, this brings us to our action items. The first action item being the approval of asset disposal, the second reading. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wald, and I'm going to hand this off to Mrs. Hermes on this. This is the second reading of this asset disposal, and I think they're eager to move some things along.
It's really tough following emotional wellness and presentations by our wonderful students, but we do have the second reading of the recommendation for a change to the district policy regarding asset disposal. This is unchanged from the first reading, and basically does follow the original framework that we set in the pilot we ran last spring. So it is a multi-step process of how we would dispose of small pieces of equipment and materials that are deemed to be no longer necessary for our purposes. Are there any questions regarding the policy?
Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the policy on asset disposal?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
This is not a roll call vote, I believe this is policy. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. This brings us to the approval of recognition of schools application. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wald. This is, if this struck our board members as somewhat confusing, I would say that you have joined your administrators in that, the questioning of why we do this. And we made some phone calls today to, or this week rather, to the ROE, and also to the Department of Education in Springfield, seeking some clarification on why we need to do this. And the long and the short of it is, in order to keep the wheels of the bureaucracy rolling in Springfield, this is something that the board here must approve before we can submit a recognition of schools application to the state. And if we figure out exactly why we need to do this, we will let you know.
Okay, and this is the first year since I've been on the board that we've had this, so it is apparently a new bureaucratic piece. So although there was nothing in there that was of any significance. So may I have a motion to approve the recognition of schools application?
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Thank you. I'm going to assume that a voice, vote will be fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion to approve the recognition of schools application carries unanimously. This brings us to the approval of the Allied Administrative Services Agreement.
Thank you, Mrs. Wald. This is, I'm going to hand this off to Mr. Albus.
If you go back four or five years ago, the district had a fully insured dental plan, and probably back five or six years ago, there was a change in providers, and I'm looking out at Sue Christiansen, because I think she may remember some of this, that was supposed to be transparent to the employees, but it was not. And there were a lot of discussions held, and at that time, we made the decision to go to a self-funded dental plan. And that's, that's proven to be very well, a good decision, but when we do do that then, you need to go out and hire a third-party administrator to process your claims. So at the time, we hired Allied Benefit Systems, and we also utilize Allied to process what's called their flexible benefit plan, so when people take money out of their pay, put it, tax shelter it, and then can use it for medical expenses, we issue a debit card. Well, there's costs in processing that as well. So Allied has handled that for us as well over the last four years, and as you can see, the renewal that's before you tonight keeps the fees the same, they've been constant for four years. The service has been good, and so our recommendation is to renew again with Allied for the 2013 calendar year.
Any questions, board members? May I have a motion to approve the Allied Administrative Services Agreement?
I move we approve the Allied Services Agreement.
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Pandersky?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher? Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye. Motion carries. This brings us to the approval of the 2012 tentative tax levy. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wald. I will again pass off to Mr. Albus to relay to us the details of our tax levy.
Going to talk about this for a few moments, and when I get done, if it seems very convoluted and confusing, you've got a good grasp of the process, because it is. Annually, the board is asked to consider and adopt a tax levy, and a tax levy is a request for property taxes to fund the school year that will start next July. But by law, we need to file that levy with the county by the last Tuesday in December of this calendar year. While the board can levy or ask for any amount it desires, the amount of revenue actually received is limited by a formula that's contained in the Property Tax Extension Limitation Act. Now, there's two components in that formula. One is the December year-over-year Consumer Price Index number that determines the aggregate allowable increase in property taxes on existing construction. That number for next year is already known, and it's 3%. And I want to take a moment and explain that. If the seven of you represent the community, what the law says is out of your, your property values, the aggregate increase that the district can receive is 3%. However, Mr. Schuler's taxes could go up 6%. Mrs. Wald's taxes could be flat. Mr. Pandersky's could actually be negative, but in the aggregate, the increase is 3%. Now, why do you have individual variances? It all depends on what happens with your property in relationship to everybody else. Okay? So that gets very confusing for people, because a lot of times, people assume that's an across-the-board, and it is not.
I think another way to explain that is if nobody's home value changed, everybody's tax would go up 3%.
Exactly, very good.
From there, some go up, some go down based on their home value, but even if everybody was flat, taxes in aggregate go up 3%.
Correct. Now, that aggregate increase in the last couple of years, in 2008, it was 1/10 of 1%, which is the lowest in the history of the property tax cap. The following year was 2.7%. This current year, it was 1 and 1/2%. Next year is 3. The year after that will be known in January, and it's currently running around 2%. So that's one component of the formula. The other component is what's called new construction. And this is an unusual year, because we have something in the district called a TIF, a Tax Increment Financing District, in which tax revenues have been diverted to pay for infrastructure improvements over a period of, I think, 23 years. That TIF is about to expire, and the value of the TIF is projected to be at $49.5 million. When a TIF comes onto the tax roll, it comes on as new construction. In addition to that, there's about another 5.4 throughout the district of new construction that's projected. The first year that comes on, it's exempt from the formula. So when we levy, we're trying to capture that new construction dollars. So when you add those two pieces together, and this is in some of the calculations in your packet, we're projecting, based on the numbers estimated today, that we would see a total increase of about 5.45%. Now, the way the law works, if you, if you levy an amount that's equal to or more than what the formula would produce, the formula knocks you back down and you get what the formula produces. But if you ask for an amount that's below what the formula produces, you don't get to true-up on that, or adjust that. You get what you asked for. So typically, taxing bodies will, will make the projection and ask for something in excess of what they think they're going to get, and it doesn't matter if you're 1% over or 50% over, the formula will knock you back down. So based on what's estimated and known today, we're projecting an increase between existing property and new construction of about 5.45%. What we're recommending to you tonight is to pass a tentative tax levy that's 5.75%. And again, if we're over the formula, it's going to knock us back down. The levy process involves adopting a tentative levy for at least a period of 20 days before a final levy is adopted, and if you are over 5%, then it triggers a whole new set of requirements called the truth in taxation, which means we have to publish something in the newspaper, we have to have a tax levy hearing, and there's certain timelines involved. So based on the calendar, it was important to present a tentative levy tonight, and a final levy will be at the December meeting. So again, we're recommending a levy increase of 5.75%. It nets down to 5.6 if you look at the debt service that's involved. But it is a convoluted process, because we're asking for money for a budget that's not yet developed, based on a tax base that's not yet known, influenced by new construction numbers that are not yet out. And I hope that all makes sense.
Any questions, board members?
I just had one question. Alan, thanks very much for that explanation. You've been explaining this to me now for two or three years, and I, I think I sort of get it, so I much appreciate it. At the beginning of the meeting, Superintendent Simic mentioned that enrollment in the district is down about 5% this year, and you know, it's possible we might get asked if enrollment's down 5% and we're asking for 5% more revenues, you know, is there a point where those lines shouldn't go different, sort of in opposite directions?
You're correct, and that's something I think that has to be monitored, but bear in mind, over the last several years, you know, we're in a period, and I've talked about this a lot, several years ago, we earned close to $1 million in interest earnings on an annual basis. This year, it's probably going to be in the $60,000, $70,000 a year range, and from everything we hear, it's going to be that way for the next couple of years. We have been prorated by the state on some of our categorical funding, we've experienced delays in state funding. There's talk now about, well, we've also seen the elimination of some state revenues, but now there's talk about taking away our general state aid, which, because we're a flat grant district, the, the old theory used to be, there are three formulas in state aid, and everybody was entitled to something, and the more property-rich you were, then you got, you received what was called a flat grant, which is a nominal amount of money, but it's still, it's a nominal amount of money on a per-student basis, but it still adds up to a couple hundred thousand dollars. And there's, there's some talk now about changing that philosophy to districts that would be flat grant, that they would receive no state aid. So there are a lot of revenue threats out there. Property taxes are by far our biggest source, but they're just one component of what we deal with. And when we're limited to, as we've talked about, a 1 and 1/2% increase this year, our health insurance costs aren't going up at a rate of 1 and 1/2%. So it's just, it's one piece to the puzzle, and I, and I understand where people come from when they say that, but we have to look at all the components, and plus things like maintaining the facilities. But long-term, if the revenue decline continues, those are discussions, not only in our district, but in other districts it would be had.
Alan, can you clarify again what increase you expect us to end up with as opposed to the 5.75 request?
3% from existing property, and then about another 2.4, depending on, again, that's on the projection based on the new construction numbers. So about a 5.45% increase.
So if it's published, you know, the, the request, 5.75%, part of it is real and part of it is perception, I'm thinking.
Nonrecurring.
Well, it's nonrecurring, and it's, it's also a different effect on people that live in the community. You know, the 3% is more of a real impact on the population, the rest of it is growth, it's new sources of income. So I'm, I'm just thinking about the perception, can it be made more clear what the components of the 5.75 are? Because I don't think most people understand it, maybe most people don't care to understand it, but it, I don't think it, it's clear what exactly is happening, and it might send the wrong message that you're concerned about hearing feedback on.
I went to a presentation by my alderman, or Ann Alderman actually, I won't say who, and he said, you know, "Our costs are flat, if your taxes go up, it's because of the schools and everything." So that's hard for us to hear too, so that's just, I'm just putting that out there, but I support what you're saying.
Well, I, I think you're spot-on, and the best intentions of the legislature in the Truth in Taxation Act is, in the last page of your packet, is the notice that would appear in the paper, it's a very prescriptive notice, down to the, we have no discretion in the words, other than "Lake Forest School District 67" in the layout and the format. There has to be a border printed, it has to be a particular font size, it has to appear in a certain section of the newspaper, and all, no, so it's got all the best intentions, but it doesn't address what you're talking about. So we have to do it through this type of forum, and when we do the levy hearing.
I'm still trying to understand with the implications for the TIF. This is the first year that we've had TIF financing coming up, and you said it, it didn't count for this, it's not counted this year? Is that correct? It's just the TIF portion that's not counted?
A TIF, we, we've talked about this in prior years, but it's been a couple years, so I'll try to be very brief on it. A TIF takes an area that would, has been determined to otherwise not develop on its own, and infuse infrastructure, roads, sewers, utilities, to generate development. And the theory is that the taxing bodies, then over time, will benefit from that development. And we have a great relationship with the city, so we have benefited from the TIF. The TIF takes in the area by Sunset Foods, McDonald's, the train station, the fire station, Everett School. There, there may be people who live out by Everett who don't know that their taxes really are not coming to us, they're going into the TIF fund. But that money goes to pay off those infrastructure improvements. But there's, there's a set, there's a finite window on how long a TIF can be, and this one is closing. And so when it comes on to our taxing rolls, it doesn't come on as existing property the first year, it comes on as new construction.
So, so I guess my question is, if it comes on as new construction, is that benefiting us more substantially than, so we're actually in a, in almost a revenue-rich situation this year, because the TIF is now coming to us, rather than the infrastructure?
Yes, and then after the first year, then it's absorbed and part of the base, and then it just, it has an impact on future years on your tax rate.
So given that, to me anyway, logically, it would seem that our rate should be lower, possibly even below 5%. I'm trying to understand how we got so high, given the fact that we have a new source of revenue.
Is that right, though? Because didn't we get part of the TIF proceeds distributed back to the school district? Meaning that the, the net pickup or incremental benefit from this TIF ending and those properties going back in the tax roll, we're not getting a full pickup on that, are we?
Well, there's a couple things at play here. I made the comment that we've benefited from the TIF, and we have. So Project 2000, which made improvements to the schools, and, and I think put in addition onto Everett, TIF funds were used to pay for that, which was allowed by the TIF statute. A year ago, I think, we replaced the parking lot at Everett, TIF funds paid for that, and that's because of the relationship between the city and the school district. Again, that was allowed under the, the TIF statute. So we've had some capital improvement benefits. Mrs. Rose, I think what, what you're talking about, and it makes sense, it's intuitive, but it's not how the formula works, the first year that that comes on, it's exempt from the calculation of the formula, so, so you calculate the formula, and then you apply that rate to the new construction. And this, this is getting way down into the weeds, but I understand where you're going, but it doesn't, the first year, it's not going to drive down the rate.
At what point can we expect to see that rate go down?
Well, that, that depends, when the rates drop, that's because the value, the property value is raising, rising at a rate faster than the Consumer Price Index. And we've seen just the opposite in the last few years, where the actual EAV has dropped, but the CPI, even though it's been low numbers, you know, 1 and 1/2% this year, the rate then adjusts upwards. And part of that is design of the formula, part of the theory, you want, well... Part of the theory, you want, well, generally, you want stability in government, whether it's a police department, a fire department, a school district. And so that's part of the design of the tax cap formula.
So you anticipate that unless property values increase in the near term, and let's assume CPI stays the same, that we'd be in a over-the-tax-cap situation for several years to come?
Well, going back to Mr. Schuler's example, because I think that was very good. If in the next five years, the Consumer Price Index and the growth in EAV percentage-wise were the same, the tax rate wouldn't change at all. So when the EAV grows faster than the CPI, the tax rate goes down. And when the opposite happens, the tax rate goes up.
This has been not only unusual, but unprecedented scenario where home values have gone down. So that's another perception issue we've never had. Nobody's ever had it.
I just want to make sure I'm clear on this, but the whole reason that we're above this 5% is because of the TIF adding so many new homes, new construction in this year. These are not necessarily new homes, but we haven't been getting their tax dollars.
Correct.
So that's why it's so high. Next year, we won't be absorbing this new construction, so the rate will be, should be, not, the tax rate should be lower.
Well, again, it...
In a sense.
Again, it depends on, if the CPI goes up 2%, but the EAV, the last couple of years, EAV has dropped 4%, 5%, 6%.
Right, and I didn't, I shouldn't have said rate, but it'll still be that cap of CPI for next year, which you're saying is gonna be, what, 2, 2-ish?
Correct. And if there's very little new construction, then the revenue growth next year would be right around a 2% number. That's correct. See, you're getting this.
Thank you.
Alan, just for sake of comparison, what was the recommendation do you call last year for the 2011 levy?
Oh, we were probably at, I would guess the recommendation would have been about 1.8, maybe 1.9, capturing some new construction growth, but knowing that the CPI was 1 and 1/2.
Did you run other scenarios based on other rates that would not have triggered this extra tax cap hearing?
Yes, and it's not running the rate. The rate is a byproduct now. So what we do is, we talk to the assessors, we talk to the city a lot, my counterpart at the city, and we get the numbers, and then we run the scenarios about what would the revenue produce be? Is it in excess of 5%? What would have to happen to new construction to change that scenario, to get it below 5? And I don't think that will happen.
When, in doing these calculations and talking to the city, do you take into account what the city is asking for, their sources of revenue, or is this totally based on our school budget? I mean, are some of the assumptions, what's happening, not just in terms of new property construction, but what's going on in the city component of their budget?
Not in our calculus, because when we receive our tax bills, there's many different entities on there, and there are a lot of factors on there. So there are debt schedules, and we don't know what the city, or, you know, mosquito abatement districts, you know.
It's also have like College of Lake County, so we would have to be meeting with, you know, six boards to try and figure that out.
My concern is, to Mr. Anderson's point, that when you get your tax bill, the largest component is the schools, and it's also the fastest-growing component. So we have to make sure that we're on board with those concerns.
The city, though, I believe, is approaching very similar to what we're doing. They're looking to capture the new construction from the TIF that comes on. And it would have been great if we were dealing with the CPI of 1 and 1/2% or the .1%, because it goes to perception, like you talked about. But the aggregate increase on existing property or on existing homeowners is gonna be 3%. The difference is capturing the new construction generated by the TIF.
This is a year where we have an inordinate amount of new construction coming on because of the TIF relative to the rest of our tax base.
Last year, I think it was about $11 million, and we're projecting it at about $55 million, so. We'll have more opportunities to talk about this, because again, this is your tentative levy.
So in December, we'll hear this again, okay?
So I think, I think one of the ways we look at it as we continue to discuss it is sort of the net revenue that comes to the district, right? What does that step look like? Because it's one thing to get, you know, to kind of go at it from a, you know, the formulaic perspective, which is strange but prescribed. And the other way is what's it mean to the average homeowner or the receipts of the district? And what's the step look, if this formula is approved with your set of assumptions, what's the step in revenue to the district? Back of the envelope, it's okay.
I have that in my model.
Not to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I have, we have it in our five-year projection model. I don't know it off the top of my head, though, but...
That'll be, that'll be an important number to talk about as we go from tentative to final, okay?
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the 2012 tentative tax levy?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Pandersky?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. This brings us to the approval of employee discipline. I move to approve the administrative recommendation to suspend the employee without pay for five days as discussed in the earlier closed session. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Pandersky?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Motion carries. Now we have the approval of human resources items. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wald. I recommend that the board approve these, the HR list as presented.
May I have a motion to approve the human resource items as presented? That includes hiring, resignations, terminations, medical and family leave, absences, change in status, and the ISBE Administrator and Teacher Salary and Benefits Report.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is this a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Pandersky?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are at the consent agenda, where we have the approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statement, the approval of minutes from an executive session on September 24th, 2012, a budget hearing on September 24th, 2012, and the minutes of a regular meeting on September 24th, 2012. We also have the disposal of audio recordings from March 22nd of 2011. Is there any item that a board member would like removed for further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Pandersky?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Motion carries. There were no FOIA requests this past month. Yes. I heard that shocking sound go through the audience. Okay, which brings us to our announcements. Friday, November 9th, 2012, is School Improvement Day with half-day of attendance. Monday, November 19th, are parent-teacher conferences with a regular school attendance. Tuesday, November 20th, parent-teacher conferences with no student attendance. Wednesday, November 21st, there is no school. Thursday, November 22nd, is Thanksgiving Day. Happy Thanksgiving. Friday, November 23rd, is Thanksgiving Break, no school. And Tuesday, November 27th, is our next Board of Education meeting at 7:00 PM at Lake Forest High School West Campus Boardroom. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.